This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, it is 6:34 PM on April the 8th, 2021. 6:34 PM, we're starting our regular meeting of the Rome City Council. It's going to be via telephone conference. And notice is given in accordance with the order of the Governor issued March 16th, 2020, recently April 5th. The City Council of the City of Rome will conduct its regular meeting by telephone conference in order to advance the public health goal, blah, 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 relative to COVID-19. So we are now in business. And Shannon, you want to help me out here with public presentations?
Did you want me to do a roll call? Or did you want me just to announce a quorum before we started public presentations?
Either way.
Okay, let's go ahead and do a roll call to be consistent. Place one, Councilmember McCabe.
President.
Thank you. Place two, Councilmember Ty.
Present.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Priest.
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Eason.
I am here.
Thank you. And Councilmember Majors.
Here.
We do have a quorum. And I will, we have four speakers tonight. The first one up is Tommy Eason.
Cynthia. Did you get my pictures?
One, honey. Yeah.
You're on mute.
I did, and I'm trying to bring them up. Do you want me to go ahead and share my screen?
Um, yes, please. Good evening, all. My name is Tommy Eason. I live at 1107 Mount Lane. I hope everyone had a joyous Easter. Blessings to all. One of our council members borrowed my Easter Bunny costume and went around town giving candy to the children. What a wonderful thing that was. There was no identification, no campaigning, just giving to the children. A Christian act on the holiest of Christian days. Then, to spoil the whole effect, accusations were made that this council member was using City of Rome property, the Easter Bunny costume, for personal campaigning. Shame on you. You didn't even bother to get your facts straight before making accusations. Number one, the Easter Bunny costume belongs to me, not the City of Rome. Two, the council member made no effort towards identification. Three, no mention of a campaign was made. Four, children don't vote. As you can see, the bunny seated in the, is the old City of Rome-owned costume. It looked creepy to me, so I bought my own and loaned it to the city for Easter egg hunts. The standing bunny is mine. People want negativity to stop. Please, get a grip. Think about what you're doing before you make, you're making unfounded accusations. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Kathy Coffey. Ms. Coffey, when you're ready.
Hello. My name is Kathy Coffey. I live at 1102 Mount Lane. We've got several questions coming up to be elected for. Possibility of bonds? Is there going to be a tax rate increase? Are there going to be certificates of obligation with no citizen input? Where do we stand with our water? What needs to be done? What has been done? How do you get to where we need to be? I'm hosting a virtual debate, April 17th, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM, between all incumbents and candidates. Each has been issued a personal invitation. I urge all of y'all to come and let your voice be heard. Please send your questions for councilmembers and incumbents and candidates to COFFEELECAT, that is C-O-F-F-E-E-L-E-E-C-A-T, at yahoo.com. If you don't have access to email, you may call me at 817-528-4244. If I don't answer right away, please leave a message with your name, and I'll get back to you as soon as possible. Again, that number is 817-528-4244. Let's hear the answers from the candidates ourselves and not pay attention to social media. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Michelle DeCretico. When you're ready, Michelle.
Thank you. My name is Michelle DeCretico. These words are my own personal opinion and do not reflect on any organization that I may be associated with. I would like to clear up accusations circulating in social media that city council members, at the time I was mayor, gave the mayor authority to hire and fire department heads. This is not true. At no time during my tenure as mayor was the mayor granted authority to hire or fire department heads. But let's travel back in time for a history lesson from the council minutes and review what happened in 2014. In May 2014, Louis Godfrey was elected as mayor, and myself, Joanne Wilson, and Tim Robinson were elected as councilmembers. The Wise County Messenger reported in the June 25th, 2014 edition that the city council gave the mayor authority to hire and fire department heads without the council's approval. Unfortunately, and not surprisingly, the minutes from this particular council meeting in June of 2014 are not published online on the city's website. Following that meeting, a mass exodus of staff happened and left only Rama Burns as city secretary. By July 2014, the city had a new police chief and municipal court clerk. By August 2014, the city had a new public works director. Councilmember Joanne Wilson, at the time, was quoted in the Messenger as saying, quote, "The city will be, will pull through the shuffling of city officials," unquote. The last city council meeting attended by Mayor Godfrey was a short time later, on September 11th, 2014. Then, at the September 29th, 2014 council meeting, the council discussed in executive session the powers of the mayor. I was present as a seated council member at this meeting, so I'm not deliberately to discuss what was said in executive session. However, I can refer you to the published minutes that say, "Action as a result of executive session was to," and I quote, "limit the hiring and firing of department heads that will be through the city council," end quote. City Secretary Rama Burns left employment with the city not long after that, and Mayor Godfrey submitted his resignation. So fast forward back to the date. Claims that the powers of the mayor have been changed in recent years are just false. It appears to me to be nothing more than a political smokescreen during an election season and aimed at fueling candidates that Mayor Wilson appears to support for this upcoming election. Councilmembers Eason McCabe and Mayor Pro Tem Priest have not taken away the hiring and firing authority from Mayor Wilson. Mayor Wilson actually did that to herself back in September 29th, 2014, when she voted yes to the motion out of executive session in a four-to-one vote, along with her fellow councilmembers, Tim Robinson, David Wilson, and Ronnie Moore, to remove that authority from the mayor. And that action has never been rescinded. That lone vote abstaining was me. I was against giving the mayor the hiring and firing power in June, and I abstained in September on grounds of all the negativity that came out of the action over the summer of 2014. I hope this history lesson has been useful to clear up the false information and claims being circulated on social media. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Deborah B. Craft. When you're ready, Ms. B. Craft.
Deborah B. Craft, 360 West Second. 10/13/16, mold remediation at Old City Hall, $27,000. And $51,000 to build back the way it was. All the council voted yes. Why wasn't this followed through? 1/12/17, city engineer stated, "If you're going to spend $100,000 to rebuild City Hall, then replace the roof. Don't just repair it." 4/13/17, mayor informed council that the structural engineers had inspected the old city hall, and no structural issues were found. After a new city municipal building presentation was made, the price for rebuilding Old City Hall kept going up from $51,000 to $400,000. Seems like there is a direct connection. In 2015, when Pittman was first elected mayor, Sam Ethan, not yet on council, in public input, and I'm paraphrasing, "She is our mayor. The people have spoken. She was voted in by the majority. We must support our mayor." Both councilmen Ethan and McCabe have been everything but supportive of our new mayor, elected by the people, even going as far as saying, "I don't trust you," trying to humiliate, bully, and belittle her by trying to reprimand her for simply gathering information to bring to the council for their consideration. This tells me that you would not listen to the people either unless they are in your clique. Practice what you preach. Support your new mayor for the good of the town. Just because your chosen candidate for mayor was not reelected, paraphrasing her recent words, put your big boy britches on and do what's right. Support and work with your new mayor to improve this city. I'm disappointed in our ex-mayor. She always said she only wanted what was best for the town. If this was true, she would have done a turnover with the new mayor, bringing her up to speed on all things. But instead, she walked out and has been critical of every word the new mayor spoke since elected. Talk about sour grapes, seems the best interest of the city was just a cover-up for an ego power trip. Social media complaints on fair campaign violations? Yes, the challengers put yard signs in front of an incumbent's large banner on a T-post. It did not cover up the banner. Maybe a bad call, but not a violation. The incumbents have done the same in at least one area of town, but they put their yard signs in front of the challenger's yard sign, covering up their challenger's sign. Real fair campaign violations? Oh, when a councilman campaigns for his chosen candidate by going door-to-door and talking bad about the challenger. And there have been a lot of complaints about the incumbents placing signs on property without the owner's permission. Not only is this against fair campaigning, it's illegal. If you're going to be running our city, then please don't try to get elected by committing illegal acts. We're tired of the double standard.
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you. Mayor, that is all we have for public presentations.
Thank you, Shannon. I have a few announcements from y'all and our fellow council people. April is here already. April 19th through the 27th, we have early voting. It will be this year at the Rome Community Center. And only Rome-registered voters may only vote at the Rome Community Center. You're not able to vote anywhere else in Wise County like it has been previously. April, I'm sorry, May the 1st is the final vote, and that again is at the Rome Community Center. For those that may not know where that is, it's adjacent to our fire department on School Road. And April 22nd, we get to have another one of these meetings. Our regular city council meeting will be April 22nd. Hopefully, you know, which I probably shouldn't say, but maybe we can go person-to-person eventually. April 29th, there is a special city council meeting scheduled at this time. It has to do with hiring our new police chief. I think the committee starts looking at applications either this week or first part of next week. So, and there's a schedule. Hopefully, we can meet. This happens on this date, and this happens on another date. So, you know, it's going to be a busy April coming up. And now we'll move to the consent agenda. Do I have, have y'all had a chance to look at that? And do I hear a, well, one thing we need to pull off. Shannon, help me here. Where do we have the minutes for, okay, for the council workshop dated March 20th? The minutes of the city council regular session dated March 25th? Everybody, okay? An appointment of Kirby Lord and Todd Haddaberry of Rome Reserve Police Officers. And that come in from Brody. So as we look at this, does anybody have anything they want to pull off? I personally want to say, hi, Kirby. Welcome back. Kirby spent quite some time with us and is coming back to be a reservist. Does anybody have any of these they would like to pull off? And if not, tell me which one of the regular city council minutes that you want to approve. Shannon, you want to do a roll call and get that one by one? Then we'll...
Once we get a motion, I will definitely do a roll call.
Okay, Elaine is making a motion.
I have a question.
Oh, question. I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
On B, item B, which are the minutes for March 25th? There is the original version, and then there was the request for amendment. I went back and played the video, and I think we need to stick with the original version because I, the part that's been asked to be stricken was actually a part of that meeting. So I, I make a motion that we accept these as long as it's the original minutes for March 25th.
Anyone else want to second? Sam, you want to second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, Shannon, you want to call for a vote on that one?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember McCabe?
Yes, before I vote, I want to, can I ask why that was asked to be stricken from the minute when it was fairly stated in the video?
Josh, I'm sorry.
Whoever is on the phone can use me. You're making a lot of noise. Thank you.
Josh, I hate to interrupt you, but we really have a motion to approve the consent agenda first. That means there's no discussion. If you want to take an item off, then you need to just go ahead and ask that it be taken off, and then we can take it up separately.
Sure, I vote aye.
Okay.
Councilmember Ty?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember Eason?
Aye.
Councilmember Majors?
Not in favor.
Motion carries.
Anybody else have anything on the consent agenda? Do I hear a motion that we accept the consent agenda in its entirety?
That was what we just did, wasn't it, Mayor Pro Tem Priest?
That was for the amendment, yea amendment or no amendment to the minutes. We still have the workshop, and we have the appointments of Reserve Police Officers.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Priest, your motion was to approve the consent agenda with the original set of minutes, so all three items, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, Shannon, my mistake. I could not hear real clearly what they were doing.
That's okay.
So we have the consent...
Certification, we need to get it, that's all.
All right, we have the consent agenda that has now been approved. Now let's move on to the monthly staff report and board minutes. Does anybody have any comments on any of those or want to pull anything off? Okay, we are moving then on to our business. Adam, Al, Fiz, and Frank. Discussion and any necessary action authorized?
Excuse me. Could we go ahead and do executive session before we go into regular business? Because it looks like it's going to be a pretty long one. And I remember you're commenting more than once that you'd like to see executive sessions move to the front?
No, move to the end. Sam, I want to move to the end, where everybody doesn't have to stay around till we come out of executive session. Councilpeople, it's not on the agenda per se, but do y'all want to leave it where it is or move it?
I want to leave it where it is. I don't want...
I can live with it. I was just making a suggestion.
And Sam, you know, to correct you what you thought, I prefer it go to the very end because that lets our citizens go back to their TV watching or whatever they're doing and not have to sit and wait for us to do our thing. Okay, so I guess then we will go back to, I've lost my place, Sam, so your fault, regular session of business. Discussion and any necessary action. Authorizing the city administrator to execute a standard developers' agreement with Sahar slash Holly Parkway Development, and that is to Cynthia.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, as you may remember, this is the development on Holly Parkway with the Rome Townhomes. You authorized me to negotiate the developers' agreement. I've worked with our attorney and the developers on this. They have signed off on that agreement. And so now what I'm asking is for your approval to execute that developers' agreement. Currently, that project, as you may remember, they've got a concept site plan that has been approved, and staff has been working with them on fine-tuning that detailed site plan that's required in a planned development zoning.
Do I hear a motion that we authorize our city administrator to take this forward?
I make that motion.
And do I hear a second? Ms. Ty, seconded. Okay, Shannon, your own.
Before we move on with the vote...
I'm sorry, Sam.
Before we move on with the vote, Mr. Atkins, we can ask questions about this item, correct?
You may. You may.
Cynthia, is there anything non-standard about this agreement?
No, it's fairly standard. Carbon has, has a pretty standard developers' agreement. And what this is, just as a reminder, this helps us cover the cost of our third-party professional services for these development agreements while they're in process. So that's what this is doing. It helps us cover the cost of the attorney and the engineer.
Okay, this is basically just boilerplate.
Mm-hmm, yes. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. No more questions.
Okay, do I hear a motion that we authorize the city administrator to move forward on this?
Mayor, we already have a motion, and it's already been seconded.
Okay, we don't have to go back now that we've had conversation.
No, ma'am.
Okay, then let's vote. Shannon, it's your, your call.
Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Ty?
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Priest?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Eason?
Aye.
And Councilmember Majors?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Okay, we'll move on under new business. Adam G. is in George. Discussion and any necessary action regarding proposed CB, CDBG community grant submission. And that goes to our city administrator, who has kept up with all these dates and all this stuff. We say personally, thanks, Cynthia.
Thank you, Mayor. It's been a team effort on staff's part and on, and on the adminis, Grant Works part as well. So this is basically, we're kind of at the final stretch. As you know, the deadline for this grant submittal is on May 3rd. So we wanted to bring it to you all tonight for your final review before, and approval before we actually submit. We do have Lenore from Grant Works that, thank you, Lenore, that is here tonight in case you have any questions. Of course, we've also got our staff that is available if you have any questions as well.
Questions, anybody? I'm sorry. Do that again, whoever. Okay, same.
Yes. This question is kind of both for Cynthia and Lenore, so whoever wants to go first on an answer. Has this process gone as expected?
That is a, that is a really good question. Actually, if anything, it's gone well ahead of time. This process has been really smooth with you guys, and I appreciate every effort that you as councilmembers and your staff has been doing. The engineer has been really receptive and good at getting feedback and documents back to me, so everything has been very smooth so far, yes.
So there's been no, no hiccups from any of the parties involved?
No. No.
And the government agency you're dealing with, they're, they've, everything's been going smoothly with them, smoothly with them?
I mean, the, the only, the only slight hiccup I might, you know, if I'm being completely honest with, and has nothing to do with this application specifically, is that they have a new online application system. It's their first year doing it, so there's just a lot of like technical hiccups right now. I mean, we said it ahead of time that it's not even an issue. I've already figured out all the technical issues.
Okay, thank, thank you, Lenore. Cynthia, everything, how's it been going with you?
I think it's been going very well. I've been very pleased with Grant Works professionalism. They have just really held our hands through this, I will say. Of course, we've got to do the work on our end as well, but they've been very receptive, very responsive. As she said, everybody has gotten the information back to her as she is needed. So I think it's gone very well and very smooth. So, I mean, we're here for eight, I mean, almost a month. Of course, we probably could have brought it back on the 22nd, but it's ready, the draft is ready now, and that way we don't cut it close as the deadline is May 3rd.
Yeah, and I also just want to add, I don't think I spoke of this before, but we also have a two-person internal review where two people inside of our company reviews this application before we hit submit. People who haven't seen it before, because I know personally that if I'm so involved in an application, that sometimes I overlook the obvious. So at this point, you know, it's already gone through an extra set of eyes. There's going to be another set of eyes next week, just so that, you know, make sure everything is super smooth and ironed out so that when it gets to TDA's hands, there's no questions.
Well, it sounds good. Sounds like we're moving forward. Any other questions from anybody? Yes, Ms. Majors?
I just wanted to say thank you, Mayor, for reaching out to Grant Works. So I appreciate it. And thank you, Cynthia, for your hard work. And Lenore, welcome aboard. So I haven't met you, so thank you. It's been a great process, and I'm looking forward to the end. So, thank you.
And Lenore, you think the end will probably be sometime in November, or could it be sooner?
Uh, yeah, you know, I'm, I'm, we're expecting it to be at the latest November. We're hopeful that it might be on a similar track that it has been in the last application cycles, where it might be September, October, but it is a pushed-back application submission deadline, and that's because it's online. But I'm also hopeful that because it's online, it goes a little bit easier for them on TDA's side so that they can push it through. And, you know, I, I think this is also a really good opportunity for me to talk about the next steps that will happen once we hit submit, right? We haven't hit submit yet. I want to make sure that our internal reviewers have time to really go through it very thoroughly and that you guys have had time to sit with it. And, you know, I'll sit with Cynthia or the mayor sometimes soon to go through the submission process. But once it's done, essentially, it gets into TDA's hands. They have to go through their own reviews to make sure the project is feasible, but it also goes through what they call a scoring process. And the scoring process is out of a points, 200-point system, and it has several breakdowns, some of which is based off of your COG, the North Central Texas COG, which is mostly based off of the project type, and which is why we went for a water project, because it gets you the maximum amount of points. So that gets you the full points on the, that like 50-point spectrum, but then the other 150 points comes from things like, have you been a recipient to a TDA grant before in the last six years? How's your track record with doing grants? What's your LMI ratio? All these other things, which we've optimized as best as we can. And we even got you the four extra points of having a public hearing done earlier and a fair housing done. So I'm looking at y'all's score, like our estimated score out of 200 points, and we try to score it a little bit on the, you know, TDA is always a little bit rough on the scoring. 195 points out of 200, which is the most you're going to get in this situation. Like, I'm sitting here looking at what we assume everyone else is getting, and everyone else, if they're at that point, they're also getting 195. So you guys are sitting at the top of the pool. It doesn't guarantee funding, but I do have really high hopes that it will go through. It doesn't guarantee funding, but I do have really high hopes that it will go through.
Hey, well, we'll send you after them if we don't. We're looking forward to a check in the mail real soon, you know? But we appreciate the effort Grant's work has put forward, we really do. Cynthia, were you going to add something or? No, okay. Okay, well then we will, we know about that. We'll move on now to H is in home. Discussion regarding right-of-way definition as it pertains to political sign placement. And that would be our city administrator and our city attorney, Mr. Atkins.
Did we take a vote on that?
No.
Yeah, we did.
Moved on.
Do we need a vote on a discussion?
Well, we want the council to, you know, yeah, approve that final submission. I mean, that, it says discussion and any necessary action. So I think we're looking for council to kind of make sure that they're signing off on that.
Okay, if we do, we do. Ashley?
Go to Sam, he was before me. So.
Okay, Sam, you're sitting in a shady area. I can hardly see your hand. Yes, sir.
I'd like to make that motion to accept the submission.
And I second it. So, let's get the ball rolling.
Okay, Shannon, you're on again.
Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Ty?
Aye.
Mayor Proten Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember Eason?
Aye.
Councilmember Majors?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, so we've got that one behind us and I apologize for not calling for a vote. I thought we voted to do this grant some time ago. So, here I am now to, H is in home again. Discussion regarding right-of-way definition as it pertains to political sign placement. City administrator or city attorney or both. Who wants to go first?
Well, I'll just introduce it. I just wanted to put this on the agenda. We did have several questions come into the office last week regarding the placement of these political signs. And we did send out a memo to them all confirming that it is, you know, behind the utility poles as a marker of being outside of the right-of-way. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew exactly what the rules are. Of course, these have been the rules for many years, so Carvin can speak to that.
Yeah, I would just confirm what the city administrator just said. It's my understanding that that has been our interpretation historically, that right-of-way was designated for the code enforcement folks as the utility line. And that seems to be a fair interpretation of the statute of the ordinance. I've read the entire ordinance through and through. Its main purpose is obviously concerning health and safety. The right-of-way is also inclusive of what I would call a shoulder. So you can have pedestrian traffic and vehicular traffic on that shoulder. But really, you hope vehicles do not go inside of the utility pole line. So I think that's a good logical line. If we keep signage inside of the utility line, I think we'll be in good shape. So, that's my interpretation of the ordinance.
And Mayor, that was just discussion. There's no action needed. I just wanted to make that we had that so everybody understood.
Well, and I think I would like to add to that, please, please give permission from whomever owns the property. We filled a lot of calls that way. That's just probably something your mother taught you years ago, but ask for permission. Okay, we're moving on down to I is the I. Discussion and necessary action regarding a contract for Rome police chief background checks. This again is the city administrator.
Thank you Mayor. Well, as you all know, we are going through that process of looking for a candidate to fill the police chief position here in the city of Rome. One of the things we need to do on any employee, whether it's city hall or public works, is our background checks. Of course, when it comes to law enforcement, they're a little bit more fine-tuned, if you will, and a little bit more detailed. And, of course, with the police chief in that capacity, it's even, even more stringent. So, and it can take up to a month. So, we do have identified a recommended outside source that has years of experience conducting these background investigations and covering all of those bases. So, that's what this is, is to, the funding is there within PD's budget on hiring and testing. And so that's what this item is, is for your approval for that contract.
Ms. Majors?
Have we looked at, on the contract, is this the best price? Or is this the only one?
It's actually a very good price. I mean, these things can go up to $1,000. And so it's actually a very good price. Carvin has reviewed the contract as well. So, yes, I think normally, I mean, like I said, for any normal employee, we're looking at, you know, $200, $150 to $200. And this is much more intense. And it's $400, he's only charging us $400.
Are we only going to keep it just for the police chief and then that?
Only, it's only, you know, for whoever we, you know, the council determines that they want, you know, the mayor's, the selection committee's going to do their job, the mayor's going to do her job, the council's going to do their job. That candidate they identify on April 29th will be subject to the successful completion of a background investigation because that's, that will start after that time and that can take up to, it can take over 30 days, but around 30 days is standard.
Okay. So, once, once that process is gone through, then it's one track, one and all employed? So we?
Yes, it is one and done.
Okay, that's it. So, all right, just making sure that we don't have to pay. So it's not a, we don't have to pay for a year for the, you know, for?
No.
Effectively a piece rate contract. A per, per review, per check.
Per, okay, per check, okay. That's it. So, all right, Michelle, I think's up next.
Well, and Josh had his hand up and gave up. You want Michelle to go next, Josh? Yeah, go Michelle.
Now, this could be that two people possibly could be going through a background check if the first one doesn't pass?
That, well, actually, yes. I mean, if the first one did not, then, you know, we would want to field the second one and then we would have to come back to you on that to authorize that background check. And I would, you know, I would be using the same person, but we would come back with another one, a request.
Would it behoove us to go ahead and, instead of one and done, one and possibly one other? What do y'all guys think?
Well, I would defer to Carvin. I mean, the, it might allow for that, but it still, Carvin, I'll defer to you if it would actually take council action on that.
I don't think he would take council action to go ahead and start the background checks. And if, the contract would allow for simultaneous background checks if he's capable of doing that.
It wouldn't be simultaneous. It would be, if the first candidate, for some reason, you know, there was an issue and, you know, we bring it to the council and it's, you know, obviously a major issue and so we have to go to a different candidate, then it would be after that. So it wouldn't be, we wouldn't, I don't, I would not recommend clearing two candidates. I would just do one and hopefully we are picking a good one and we don't have to come back.
That, that's the typical and standard practice. I just understood the mayor's question to ask, to be asking, could we do two at the same time just to save the, you know, the additional time that will be entailed? Once, you know, if we get to the end of a surge, say we spend 35 days and then we have to start over because we find something bad, then it could take, you know, 70 days total to get the both reviews done. So, I'm just saying theoretically possible, we could start earlier if you wanted to, but we'll just have to discuss that and decide if that makes sense.
And Carvin, what I was really asking, if number one falls, could Cynthia go ahead with number two without council approval? I mean, could we make it a either or?
I think at the point when you get ready to approve the first one, I think you make it subject to a background check and then add just a caveat to that. If the background check comes back negative, allow Cynthia to immediately start the next background check just to save time.
Yeah. And not have to come back, you know?
Right.
Do we need a vote on this? Yes.
You do need to authorize the execution of the contract.
Right, yeah. Michelle?
I make a motion to approve the contract.
Ashley?
I second it.
Anybody with any questions? Shannon, your own.
Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Ty?
Aye.
Mayor Proten Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember Eason?
Aye.
Councilmember Majors?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll move on now to Adam J. is in Joe. Discussion and any necessary action, pardon me, regarding council interaction with city employees. And I have that with my name under it. Cynthia, the way we are laid out, she is the city administrator and she is literally over every employee in the city except for me. I in turn am the mayor and work with Cynthia. And normally, none of the city employees will be having a discussion with a council person. In rare occasions, there might be a need when Cynthia wasn't available, that I might step in and take over something. But let's just be respective of the employees and not try to tell them where to go or when to jump off. That's, I just wanted to make that clear because it gets to be a little muddy sometimes.
Mayor, if I could, I would just add, as a legal warning, you have, the elected officials have what's called in Texas, official immunity for your actions, as long as you are taking actions within the scope of your authority, within the scope of your job. As a council member, you do not have the authority to go directly to a staff member and give them directions unless the full body has given you that authority. So if the full body has told you you could do it, then obviously you can do it. But otherwise, you don't have authority to go directly to an employee and give them instructions. Certainly, if you choose to do that, then you run the risk that if they go have an accident or if they hurt somebody, that you would ultimately be responsible. So as your attorney, I would advise against anybody in the city doing that, go through the chain of command, go through the mayor, go through the city administrator and allow them to take the responsibility. And they will be within their scope of authority and it'll, of course, avoid any potential liability that way.
Any questions? Okay, we'll move on now to Adam K. is in K. On the thing. Discussion and necessary action regarding senior lunches. Councilman Majors?
Good afternoon, good evening, council members. Tonight, I'm asking our senior luncheons to be returned on Friday afternoon. After speaking with a few attendees around the community, they missed their last lunch and the camaraderie over the years that they have grown to love. With a mask mandate lifted, can we work with them and possibly their reservation only with the number of guests to accommodate them? Let's bring back the happiness, cheerfulness, and even the domino playing. Council, can we, in return, bring back the senior luncheon? And return it to Cynthia to elect or give one of the seniors the option to take it over? So, what can we do? What's an extra action can we take tonight to bring back the seniors?
Yes, Sam? Yes?
It was discussed quite a while back as to whether the city wanted to actually try to sponsor some type of senior luncheon activity on Fridays. It's just not a feasible thing to do. The senior luncheon is and always has been a private activity executed by private citizens on their own. If we get involved, then we're going to have to start working with making sure that these seniors have an ADA compliant building, that they're going to have to have a kitchen that is commercial grade with commercial vent hoods. I mean, this is, the city does not and has not sponsored the senior luncheon. It is something that private citizens have run. I mean, Marie Moore has been running it, but not through the authorization from the city of Rome. She does it because she is a very kind and generous woman. If we get involved, I think that we're subjecting ourselves to significant liability because we don't have a place that is compliant for them to do this. And we don't want to have to start providing cooks and all of a sudden we're providing the food and, I mean, if we're, if we're, if we're running this, then it's going to, it's not just to tell Cynthia she can go do something.
Anyone else want to offer any comments?
What?
Elaine?
Well, I, you would know I have a comment. First of all, as far as the seniors concerned, are concerned, you know, the shots are ongoing, but still, there's less, there's less than 20% of the population that have had the opportunity to get their vaccinations and those antibodies kick in and all that kind of stuff. And we do know that seniors are the most vulnerable group. And so, I think that maybe a delay on that until, you know, that, that number gets higher, that's one thing. But what Sam mentioned is, is a big concern. We already know the condition of that building where they were using before. We already know that the refrigerator, for example, had to be pulled out of there because there was, the electrical was not up to standard and there was a short and possibility of a fire. So, in order for us to allow anyone to use that building, knowing all of these safety issues that are in the building, I think that's a huge liability to the city to allow anybody in there, number one. And, and number two, we don't have it in our budget, the current budget, to make those repairs. So we're going to have to come up with the money to get it up to standard so that we can let any of our citizens use the building. Otherwise, we're at a huge liability risk, in my opinion. I want the seniors to get together if they're comfortable with doing that. But I think the liability for the city is, is just too far out there. Maybe the seniors decide, maybe they can approach a church in the, or something like that, that has a commercial kitchen that is up to code in the interim until we have a chance to get, get our buildings taken care of. So, I'm, I want the seniors to get together. I am a senior and... I am a senior and, uh, and like you said, I'm, I'm anxious for things to get back to normal myself. But I think that from a city standpoint, the liability is too great for us to allow anybody to use that building until it's up to code.
Yes, Ashley?
Well, if I remember when Sean gave us his report, that one was only a thousand dollars. I was unaware that there was the refrigerator, um, was pulled out of there. Um, but I think it was only a thousand. I don't know if we can get it up to code, um, or anything. I don't know if we can get money from one place and to get it fixed. Um, and then now down to do their potluck, um, like they did before. Um, just to open the building up to the residents. I mean, they're ready to get back to normal, so, you know, citizens are tired. You let, you know, you watch the news. Everybody's ready to get back to start visiting their friends and happiness and, you know, listening to the depression. So I just want to, you know, to bring it back and, you know, help them. So whatever we can do, I'm just out for the, I'm, I get out and I speak to the residents and see, see what they want. So that was something that was on the agenda so that they're wanting and see if we can help. So it's at that, it's what I remember Sean saying. That building was the least amount of money in our city that needed repair. And so if there's something we can do, I'm bringing it to y'all to see. So whatever. So Elaine?
Is there a right, Mayor, if I speak?
Sure.
Okay. Several times, you know, I've mentioned this before and I'll, I'll bring it up yet again. Sometimes in these kinds of situations, and I don't know, you know, I've worked with a lot of grant money and 501(c)(3) and all that kind of stuff. This would be a great opportunity, uh, under the seniors have a board. And, uh, this would be a great opportunity for them to step up for themselves and get their 501(c)(3). And if they were able to do that, then there would be funds that are available, uh, especially through the state and county, to help with some of these matters uh, that have to do with, uh, what facilities they're using. And and maybe even help them with some of their costs to do with, with their Friday meals. Um, it's kind of a scary deal when you look at that 501(c)(3) packet that you need to fill out. But I do believe that maybe if we, um, in, as citizens, uh, approached maybe some, uh, legal assistance that would maybe donate their time uh, to help that 501(c)(3) get filled out and submitted, I think it would open a lot of doors for the seniors. And, uh, it's something the city can't do for them. It's something that the seniors have to do for themselves. And but it's, it's certainly doable. And so I'd be happy to help some way outside of the city council. Uh, but I think that's what it's going to take is our senior, uh, group to, um, to help themselves a little bit and get that 501(c)(3). Just a thought.
Sam?
Yes, Ashley.
Well, Sam, go ahead and then I want to say something on Elaine.
Okay, Sam, they gave you the permission to go ahead. Sam?
I'm glad I have the consensus of permission. First of all, um, Mayor Pro Tem Priest, I agree with you. I would love to see the seniors be able to get back together again and start meeting again. That it was a, it was a big part of our community, their being able to do that. So I agree with you. I'd love to see them get back together. Um, I just went back and pulled the PowerPoint presentation submitted by Sean on the fourteenth of January. And I'm looking at slide, um, what number is this? Slide thirty-six or forty-two. Estimated cost for the senior center was three hundred seventy-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Um, to take care of the issues that he identified. Now, I know that's a soft number, okay? It's not a firm number, but, um, yeah, that's a big number, though. Uh, I kind of like, uh, Elaine's idea of maybe they could start working with one of the churches because the church may have a, a kitchen available on a Friday afternoon or Friday at noon. Um, yeah. I'd like to see it happen, but I don't think it needs to be the city's action to make it happen. It's always been a private activity and when they're ready, they can make it happen.
Anybody else with comments? Elaine, do first. Ashley, go ahead.
Sam, I'm glad that you want everything to turn over to churches. One day the city needs to start bringing back events, so, you know. One day we got to step up. But Elaine, I will, I thank you for bringing that up. I will see which citizen that I've been talking, the citizens that I've been talking to that are the seniors, um, who are citizens that don't hold a chair that, because they can't hold two seats and do it, so. But I will, um, maybe could reach out since you are very knowledgeable and could help them. Um, that is very kind of you. So I just want to see us moving in the right direction for, um, you know, to do a hosting event and also for our seniors. Um, because we have a lot that have been here, um, for a long time. And so, but I guess since that's just this discussion, um, uh, Shannon, do we need to do anything on that one since we're not going to take any action? Or is it, Michelle, sorry? But thank you, Elaine. Sam?
Michelle.
Pushing off my event to the next time. So we'll, maybe one day we'll get an event together.
Michelle, did you have something?
I just had a couple of questions. Is that building ADA compliant? It is?
Elaine shaking her head no.
I thought it was.
I thought it was almost there or was there and I'm at, don't know.
Okay, I think that's what I would be most concerned with. But if, can, can people start reserving those buildings at all? Is that open yet or is that, is that something that we've stopped right now because of COVID?
When I was the community center, I doesn't have an ADA and the last time I was in it, I, they didn't have water in it. So I don't know, Cynthia, and maybe I'll know if Sean's on the phone can tell us, but.
Well, he is, but, um, I mean, yes, obviously with COVID, pretty much everything was, everything was, um, kind of put on hold. Um, and since COVID and it's been ongoing, you know, we've done the whole facilities and we've become aware of, um, I think, I think we knew some of these things, but certainly more in depth, we've become more, much more aware of the condition of some of our facilities. And so, uh, what I'm hearing, um, is that when they're not ADA compliant, it's just difficult to rent them out. Now, I don't know, I mean, I've only been here a year, well, a little over a year now, but I don't know if you all used to rent out the community center or not.
Yes. There was, yeah, there was provisions to rent it out. Now, I don't know that they rented out a whole lot, but there were provisions for it.
We have not rented out the community center since I've been here because of the audio visual equipment in the community center.
And I was not aware of that. Elaine, are you holding your hand or are you just tired?
I'll put it under the desk.
Okay, Sam's got his hand up. Now, Sam?
I've got a question for Mr. Atkins. The, uh, the senior center is not ADA compliant. Um, if we were to allow the seniors to use it and one of them became injured trying to use the single bathroom that they have without grab rails, um, is there a liability for us there?
Really two, two separate issues. Uh, the ADA gives an individual citizen a right to complain that we have not made the public facilities available to them because we haven't accommodated their particular disability. Uh, an injury that results from our negligence, we would just have to analyze our tort liability. Uh, we have immunity from a lot of claims, but if it involved the use of motor driven equipment or if it was some, uh, negligence on our part that caused the accident, then we might potentially have some liability. But it's not simply because of the ADA issue. That's a, that's a more along the lines of a dis- fishing claim.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, we've had this discussion. Let's maybe go home and think about it, see if you've got any ideas. Let's, and we don't, we don't. I don't mean with using city building, I mean helping out our seniors. And we'll move on now to the, uh, next item is item L as in Lucy. Discussion and any necessary action regarding parks. And that is Ms. Majors again.
Can y'all believe I have another agenda? So, all right, Cynthia has added some pictures for us tonight that I've been taking. I visit the parks, as well as y'all know, I get out and walk our communities and talk to our residents. Um, so while I've been visiting our park, um, okay, so here's the basketball goal. So while visiting our family park, council, I would like for us to revisit and reconsider updating what we have before we build and spend unnecessary funds in Biwell. Our family park has, um, a water fountain that does not work, basketball goals that have been broken for some time and, um, a barrier that is needed between the neighbors and the park. After going on multiple occasions and listening to residents, they are just as concerned as I am. However, I am aware that we have agreed on the park and Biwell, but we, can we revisit and update the family park first? Uh, I have been speaking as well with residents in Biwell. Excuse me, sorry. And they are just as hesitant on the large park and traffic without roads that you need to go off roading just to enter their, to enter their homes that should be fixed first. Can we, again, visit and take action on fixing our family park before looking into others? So council, what can we do? And these are just a couple of pictures. I didn't want to take, didn't want to share pictures that I've been taking for over the month. I didn't, it wasn't, it wasn't appropriate for me, so this is just some. And this is, so.
Do I hear any discussion from anyone about what we need to do with park, with our family park?
Well, if I, if I might, um, I will say, and I did talk with councilmember Majors about some of these items, but, um, you know, the, um, you know, Sean and his, his guys out there have been, um, doing repairs and, and doing some things out there. So, um, Sean, did you want to talk about some of those things? Um?
Uh, yes, if, uh, on the family park, you know, we've been pretty busy on, uh, removing the dead plants that were killed during the freeze. And so we've, uh, um, removed the shrubs, the dead shrubs and added new mulch. Um, the basketball goals, um, reminded, from what, from visual, I didn't see it being broken. We did replace the basketball chains, but if there are, um, I didn't get up there and grab the whole of the rim and see if it's broken, but only thing I could tell, um, the other day, um, was the chains and those were replaced earlier this week. So Ms. Majors, if there is another issue with those, uh, basketball goals, uh, you know, please let us know. Uh, other things is that the butterfly bench, uh, bench we found was broken. Um, to replace, to repair that water fountain, um, those water, top water fountains run about three thousand dollars. And so with a limited budget, some of those things are what we would have to, uh, budget for, uh, next year. Um, you know, we replace lots and ongoing, we've had some electrical issues that we've had to have electrician out, especially at the veterans park. And so we've been pretty busy maintaining those, those parks. But there are certain issues, uh, please let us know. Um, you know, we try to catch everything as we can. Um, weekly, uh, we, we mow usually once to twice a week, uh, take care of the ants, pick up trash daily. And so if there's something outside that we may miss, you know, please let us know.
Thank you, Sean. Anyone else?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, um, I'm just making an assumption here that, uh, Public Works keeps a list of the maintenance items that they plan to, um, address. So like the water fountain, if it was three thousand dollars, we know it's not going to fit in the current budget, but that is something if, if, if we deem that that's worth three thousand dollars, uh, then it could go on the new budget. So I'm just saying, I guess my question is then, so the parks has a maintenance budgeted item that Public Works follows. Is that, isn't that correct?
Yes.
And so then we just have to look at the priorities and it's not, that budget item is not just the family park. It's, it's the veterans park as well and the provision. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so when we have those unforeseen things like this major freeze, they killed a bunch of vegetation and maybe there were water issues as a result of that, pipes freezing or something similar to that, then those are things that we have to deal with out of our budget. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So, so, um, so, and, and Sean's just explained that they do regularly check those things. Okay, I can see why the water fountain hadn't been fixed. My next, my next question is, you know, we did a lot of survey work with the steering committee on parks and rec. And, um, if my memory serves me correctly, there, we surveyed and had action group with each subdivision in relation to, uh, parks and rec. And it was my memory, and I could be wrong, but that Biwell, uh, submitted their surveys and that they were in favor of having, uh, some recreational park type activity. Uh, so, and I've just heard quite a few people that have children say that they would like to have a play area over there for their kids. So I'm not saying build a, uh, you know, a big sports complex over there, which would attract a lot of, a lot of flow of traffic and all that kind of stuff. But the surveys that we've taken indicate that there is some interest in Biwell for park. So just, just bringing that up.
Well, and you're correct, Mayor Pro Tem, there was, uh, there were focus groups in, in the different neighborhoods and that is the feedback that we got. I mean, I have heard, you know, some other conversation as well. They weren't on that focus group. Um, and just to keep in mind, I mean, these, um, are, are neighborhood parks and Sean can probably speak in more detail to, you know, the difference between, you know, a, a major park and a neighborhood park. Um, and the other thing I did want to state and, um, you know, we, Sean, I mean, you might want to speak to it. If you guys remember last fall, we had some damage to the slide out there. Um, and so we had it roped off for a while and then we kind of had it, um, fixed a little bit, but we knew we had to order, um, and replace that part. Sean, do you want to speak to the cost of that and the, and the status of that?
Yes, first on the neighborhood parks and the major parks, your neighborhood parks are designed just to accommodate those people within, uh, rough walking areas. That's why, um, there are small neighborhood parks in different locations in the city. They're not there to attract people outside the neighborhood. Um, and then your large parks is considered. Um, and then your large parks is considered a regional park, which is where you have your, a majority of your parking, your larger events, your sport complexes, all that stuff. So when you start going about parks, that's when you build neighborhood parks, and then you also build, uh, parks that are a large event parts for, um, for a, a bigger group of people. Uh, to the, um, tube, um, due to the fact, the age of that piece of equipment, that tube has to be a special ordered, and off the top of my head, I'd believe that replacement price for that one tube is three thousand dollars. So with budgeting and, and the unforeseen things that we've had to repair, uh, like some of the lights, um, we're having also some of the, um, still have to repair, uh, possibly another light out there, um, we have to kind of, um, look at different issues, and so we are budgeting and, and prioritizing what needs to be done. Right now, that, that, that tube is, uh, is adequate, we've, we've kind of secured it, um, and, and, and inspected it daily, um, but we're going to have to, uh, wait till mid year to see what kind of money we have to replace that.
Yes, Ashley.
This is why I'm asking that we need to maintain what we have before we build another park, because our park, our family park has been maintained well before the storm. So, I mean, there's, where the butterfly or whatever it was, I mean, we have bolts that are sticking up out of the ground where a kid could get hurt if it, they fell on it, a young child was running and fell on it, they could get hurt. I mean, the, yes, the basketball chains were broken for quite some time. I mean, I've been called, I mean, I'm not supposed to air out dirty laundry on city council, and I've been called negative Nancy because I complain, you know, about things broken around town, and about our restrooms being locked up, and, you know, but our park needs to be maintained. There's kids, I go by there and walk just to see how pretty, you know, it, it could be, you know, this is our one that we have here in town. And I think that we need to make this one beautiful before we go and build another one. And so, yeah, you're saying it's three thousand dollars, our water fountain, you know, it, we can't build it, we should have the money right now, and it should have been fixed well before the storm, well before, you know, last summer, because it hasn't been fixed for a long time. And if, you know, our parks were, yeah, I mean, I, I, I mean, if they're, if anybody's online can chime, you know, can say anything, or, or if you know Sean, how long it's been out, but I know it's been out for quite some time. I mean, that stuff that we need to fix, so that's what I'm asking our council, can we revisit, fix this part, give it, get it up to 100% before we, before we go and build something, you know? That is, because when I talk to citizens that are playing in our family park, um, that, you know, that is what they're, you know, they kind of say too, I mean, when they're walking, I mean, and looking at stuff, so. And I was, I'm sorry. Sean?
Sorry. No, I just wanted, uh, on, on the maintenance of the park and developing parks, you have to separate those two. You should have a maintenance budget, and also begin to plan for the future, and then start allocating separate money for development of parks. And so you kind of have to separate those, that, you know, I've developed about 10 parks in my lifetime, and so you have to have a maintenance budget to maintain and improve the existing parks, and then also start creating parks for the future for other areas that don't have amenities. And so this is where, you know, as a staff and council, we got to get creative with the budget, start setting money aside for maintenance, and start setting aside money for improvements of a new park. And so they can work hand in hand and together, uh, to accomplish both goals.
Well, then why can't we put, why can't we put other equipment into the family park? I mean, we can ma- give maintenance to the family park, but also put something else into the park, even if it's a dog park, or even if it's a extra playground for a larger, for an older child. I mean, my son couldn't even play in it as long as we've lived here, because he's, he's not a smaller child. I mean, there was only the basketball, so why can't we do that? So that, that's never been accommodating to any of the children, you know, maybe if it's older children around here. So that's the reason why I've not, and, you know, we, that's the reason why I'm asking our council to revisit it, to maintain and to, you know, fix what we have before we go and build something else, and maybe talk to Biwell, and not just do a focus group, go out there, what I'm going out there and saying, hey, what, you know, what do you want to see, you know, and, you know, they're doing, they're hesitant on the same thing, because now they're, you know, looking at hearing, um, sorry, um, so, but I think maintain it, and then fix, and add something to it, and then that might entice them, and Biwell that might entice them that's coming if we do one in the other parts of town. So I think we need to, again, I'll repeat myself, but when you go and walk it, I've been walking it every, every other day, looking at it, um, a lot more lately than I have before, and I don't even have young kids, so, but I think that's what we need to do for the city, so.
Sam?
Thank you, Joanne. Sean stole a bit of my thunder in saying, suggesting that the maintenance of a park and the development of a park are two completely different colors of money. It's apples and oranges. Now, Ashley, I think it would be a wonderful thing if we could significantly increase the maintenance budget for the family parks. I think that'd be great. Instead of it being twenty thousand a year, we can make it fifty thousand a year, we can make it a hundred thousand a year, and all of a sudden the maintenance on the parks becomes fabulous, and we can have a lot of great things. But that becomes maintenance on the parks, and we need to budget down. Now, when we're talking about the future, and again, Sean stole all, all my thunder, but so, I, I'm just going to repeat a little bit of what Sean said, we also need to think in terms of expanding our park system, because, you know, I don't know, you and I probably talked to a lot of different people out in, uh, out in Biwell, because I talked to dozens of people that were excited, they loved the idea of having that little pocket park. Um, yes, they expressed, we're going to have people driving in from all over town to come use our park, and it's like, well, you know, why would they? It's just a little pocket park, it's a neighborhood park. It's not even going to have, um, facilities for parking. It's going to be someplace where you walk, it's for the neighborhood. Um, I explained that to them, I even showed them the pictures from the, uh, UTA, uh, Parks Master Plan. Everybody I showed it to thought it was fabulous, great, when can you do it? Do it as soon as possible. It'll give our kids someplace to play. Um, uh, you're right, the only complaint I heard was about driving there. Now, I believe that the Parks Board has been, uh, talking about applying for a grant, where it's a 50% grant, I believe. Um, the grant that they're looking at, and again, they're following the Parks Master Plan, is so that they can start out in Biwell with that pocket park, and then they can start putting in po- uh, parks around the city, because there are several of them that were identified. But again, we're talking different colors of money. So if you would like greater maintenance out at Family Park, I think that's a wonderful idea. Let's increase the maintenance budget for the parks.
Well, you know what I'm going to say about this now, don't you? Alternative funding, alternative funding. So, you know, we, we all know getting a balanced budget is always a challenge, and especially with all of our infrastructural needs, especially now. But parks, rec, safety, family safety, community safety are all items, and so there's not, there's not anything that keeps us not only for looking out at alternative funding for future, but there are, there is alternative funding for the parks that we do have for expansion and improvement. And so it falls not only to the city council, but to those that are interested, uh, in making that happen, to look for that funding. Uh, the funding is not going to just show up at your door, as much as I'd like to win the Lotto and, you know, and give it to the city, it's just not going to probably happen that way. So alternative funding is something that, that, that we have to look at all the time. And, um, and so if we identify some needs that would in, expand our, uh, existing park, our family park, uh, improve the safety, uh, maybe replace the, the side, uh, the slide because it is, uh, of such an age, it's, it's hard to get parts, and it's not safe, and that kind of stuff. So those are some avenues that can help what I call it enhancing the budget. So we may have, have something that we have to do in kind, and, and I know that, um, Ms. Wilson has, has talked about this before, that they, uh, they got in kind through not only donations and, and, uh, volunteer labor and some other things, uh, to make those things come together. So that's not new to the city, it's just something that we don't do often. And, uh, with all the things we have in front of us, we ought to be shaking those trees all the time, and it takes all of us to do it. It can't be just, uh, the city administrator, and, and it, it takes people who care, and, uh, but I just don't want you to shortchange yourselves by forgetting that that's always a way to look at that system of funding, uh, to enhance the quality of life in the city of Rome.
Well, Elaine, I think I've mentioned before, the Texas Parks and Wildlife Commission, theirs is usually a 50/50 loan, but the 50% that the city ends up owing can be parceled out with volunteerism and, uh, labor, basically. We paid for the first part, and I believe I'm correct on the thing, uh, 100%, in other words, it was a sixty thousand dollar, uh, half, our half was sixty thousand, and by keeping tabs on people that showed up with heavy equipment, shovels, you know, did a little bit of everything, and the city secretary at the time did a marvelous job of keeping up with the hours and the values, so, and I'm sure that they still operate more or less in that same way. So maybe, are y'all looking at putting in anything under Texas Parks and Wildlife grants, or is there a deadline? I don't remember if you had, I think it was not all that complicated, but there were deadlines, and I can't remember.
It's like any other grant that the city would apply for, first you got to have a plan, you got to know exactly what it is you want to do, you got to have some idea of the cost of that, you got to do your homework, that's always first, and then the next thing...
Do we have anything currently going on to apply?
Not for the, not for the improvement and expansion of, uh, the family park that I'm aware of, but that's a Sean, Sean question, and, um, um, but anyway, my, my point here is that that's an ongoing thing, it has to be a part of the budget plan, you, you, you just can't, you know, you've got to know that there, there are costs, there's deadlines, there's homework to do, and, uh, it's not something you can just do at the last minute. It takes planning, and it has to, uh, be reflected in our budget plans. And so that's why those, those surveys and things that we did, uh, with those steering and action committees, uh, are important, is part of the process of preparing, uh, to have, um, credibility whenever you make that application, so.
Yes, Ash, I'm sorry. Ashley?
No, thank you, Elaine, that's really, I appreciate that, but if we could do the grant and, for the expansion, and to update the playground equipment, and if it, any little bit of things that we need, um, at the family park, um, would greatly be appreciated before we look into the other parks in the city. I mean, that one has not been updated since, Joanne, when did you, when was that donated? Um, back in 12 years ago?
Yeah, sure, I'm not good at dates, but it's been a while.
But, I mean, I don't know when the equipment, but I mean, we could, I'm not saying the equipment, I mean, the equipment, but I would love to see something, uh, so if we could do anything, I mean, you know, Elaine, I might have to help you, but if we could do the, um, something, but if we could make a motion to see if we could get the grants, you know, working on a grant, so, or anything, so.
I, I just want to correct one thing, Ashley, if you don't mind.
Yes, ma'am.
There is no reason to delay the action that the Parks and Rec are taking for future. These things can work simultaneously to repair and expand the family park, that's a different grant system, it would be a separate grant, and at the same time, the future planning, uh, for the city of Rome in the Parks Department can move forward with what they're already involved in. There's not a reason that those two things can't work simultaneously.
That's fine, I just want to fix what we have. I want to fix and update and unify what we currently have, I want to see the restrooms open every day, and have, make the citizens proud of the first one that is currently here in our downtown, in, currently for the citizens that have always been here, so, and then expand out. So that's all I would want, you know, listening to the citizens. I am out walking and listening to them, so that's all I ask, so.
And I've got two hands up, and I have no idea who prevailed. Josh, you're, you're on my left, then we'll get to Sam.
All right, Sam. Um, if you ask me, ultimately, it's not our decision to tell the Parks and Rec Board what to do. They're an advisory board, and they bring those types of decisions to us, and we either approve or deny those, but I would highly suggest that if anybody has any input as to what they would like to see in a park, or in a Biwell park, or a Chislen Park, or whatever, that they attend the Parks and Rec Board and make those, uh, presentations there, and then the Parks and Rec Board can take those and decide what they need to do, whether it's ask for more money, or the grants that they're working on, or any of that type of stuff, and then they can bring that back to the council with their decisions, and then we, we approve or deny. But we have never been here to directly tell the Parks and Rec Board what they have to do, and what they can't do, or any of that type of situation.
Good. Sam?
Sam? You're muted.
Thank you, thank you, sorry about that. Josh, you're right, the, uh, there is a vehicle available to everyone to go through the Park and Recs Board. Um, actually, I look at, and just off the top of my head, I think of things that have been done in the past few years out at the family park, like they added the, uh, the fence to make sure that the children didn't have access to the railroad tracks. Um, the Bee Crafts were generous enough to donate the lights that were put out there. I know that, uh, Tommy engaged the, uh, local, uh, I believe junior high school art department, and they painted the, um, the butterfly bench, and they went out and they got, uh, plants, and they put in plants that attracted butterflies to go around that butterfly bench. Um, I know that there's been significant work done to try to reduce the number of, uh, stickers, because I know I've been out in the park, and this is many years ago, when it was just sticker infested. So, uh, it's kind of insulting for you to say that nothing's been done to the park, there's actually been quite a bit done, and that's just off the top of my head what I've named. Um, but, again, everything costs money, and actually, I'd love to see more done out at the park, family park, I'd love to see that. If you're proposing that we increase that park budget significantly, then we can look at the budget, we'll be looking at the budget. But doesn't this become more of a budget discussion item? Do we want to increase the maintenance budget on the park? And as Elaine said, we can increase it, you know, we can work on the maintenance at Family Park at the same time as applying for these grants. Now- Park at the same time as applying for these grants. Now, I believe, uh, Sean, in my listening to Park and Rec Board meetings, I believe Sean's been instrumental in discussions they've had about the, uh, the grants that they're currently looking at. Cause I believe the mayor was asking, just where are they with the process? So Sean, could you give us a briefing on just where are you with the process?
Yes, sir. Um, we reached out to Grant Works, um, since they already, were already one of our clients. Uh, they provide us a price to apply for the small parks grant, which is up to a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um, and talking to, to the board, um, uh, it was a $5,000 upfront fee. It is, is different from the CDBG projects where they don't get paid until after we get approved. This is actually an upfront, uh, $5,000 to apply for it. However, because of the, the amount of the money of a hundred fifty thousand dollars, it will be, you know, a, a big task to come up with that additional matching fund of a hundred fifty thousand dollars. So right now, it's more of a, um, we're researching on how we can do our part by, you know, volunteerism, donations, um, uh, to, to, to be able to lower our portion of that money. So that's where we're kind of at right now. Um, I've sent the, um, plans to kind of give an engineering price, um, uh, just to start the actual park itself of grading. And, um, it is a very large number, but it, but it can be done in multiple different phases. And so we're just kind of to the balance of how we are going to fund our matching part of a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. Anyone else? Well, we have been, yeah.
I just had someone remind me that when we had our last concert in the park, that was paid for out of the park budget. Um, but, you know, people could donate if they wanted more events like concerts in the park, we could have, you know, private citizens fund that.
Well, Sam, I was involved, I think, at the last concert. We called it, I forgot, you know, music in the park or some such thing. I do not think the city was out anything on that. And I could certainly stand to be corrected. I know we had the entertainers to volunteer. We had the pavilion, not, not the pavilion. We had it actually in the park itself and the tennis court. And, you know, uh, wasn't a whole lot of money.
I was just corrected. It was paid for out of private dollars.
Okay.
And, uh, so yeah, I mean, somebody just told me that they wrote a check for $1,800 for that event. That was privately funded. But, yeah, I, I think if we're going to increase the budget for maintenance of the park, then we can do that. But that's a budget item.
Well, and we will look at budget soon, you know, at the time, but clock is ticking and things are happening quicker. Anybody else have anything before we move on?
I just wanted to say, I guess it was, I didn't mean to come off insulting, but it was, Sam, so I didn't mean to about, there has been things that have happened, but recently when I'm going out there, that things haven't been done in the park. So I will apologize on that one, but I'm for the park. But, um, Cynthia, do we, can, does it have to go back to the park board? Or do we just hold off and tell the budget, um, to see about doing a maintenance or, um, to what Josh was saying? Does, does it need to go back to the park board? Or can we take action without them or anything?
Well, right, yeah. So right now, I mean, the budget, there's a couple of questions in there. So let me break them down. I mean, the budget question, it will need to be in, in the budget season. So you guys will have all these different things and you're going to have to prioritize and/or, you know, raise taxes. Um, so there's a budget question for sure, as has been discussed. Um, they're already ongoing and discussing strategies to get a grant going. So the park board is already discussing that. Um, and, you know, I, I listened in on the last one. So, I, I mean, I know they're looking at a lot of different, um, angles. And, and as, uh, Sean has said, he's already done some background work as well. So that part is moving forward as well. So, um, I think it's two-pronged. So I definitely think you need, you know, every council member needs to kind of keep track of what their priorities are. I mean, I'm keeping track, obviously, as we're talking about them. So, you know, I'll bring them and then you guys have the, have the tough decision of how you're going to, you know, fund everything.
Yes, ma'am. Now, do you think that we could do, um, an updated, um, survey just for the Biwell residents or their park since Sam's getting conflicting, um, resident feedback as well as I am to see our, you know, is there something that we could do regarding that? Maybe just on their community page? Um.
Well, I mean, we can always develop a survey and, and try to disseminate it. I mean, I, I will say, I think we had some pretty good discussion and it sounds like, you know, different people have been out there. But, um, you know, if that's something that you would like, you know, the park board would like to direct, you know, staff to do is develop that survey and try to get it out. And, um, you know, the park board has had conversations about what that neighborhood park would actually look like because it's, um, it's kind of, you know, and Sean can speak to it too, but it's kind of, it's bite sized. So it's like, well, maybe you don't have to, these are some of the conversations they've had. Maybe we don't have to bite it off all at once. And maybe we can just do this part now and then this part then. Um, and so they've been having those conversations. Um, so, I mean, it's always an option if, if, you know, if the park board, uh, wants to, you know, wants to do that, we can certainly assist.
Well, let's just go back to the later one. Let's just, I just want Family Park updated and cleaned up. So, yes, Sam.
Yes, Sam. Sam, are you muted? Maybe?
Not anymore.
Okay.
I've seen people in the past that a survey got, you know, a survey's done and they don't like the results. And they say, well, let's just do another survey. And then they don't like the results. And they keep wanting to do surveys until they get the result they want. Um, we did a survey. We had a lot of people participate. Um, the survey said they wanted a park out there. They wanted to do something with that land. I even talked to the people that, uh, their land backs up to the very large portion where the floodplain is. They seemed really excited that, uh, the city was going to spend some money back there. Um, I, I, I don't see much, I don't see much pointing to, I don't like the survey results, so let's do it again.
Okay. I think we're hitting, getting at, I think we're just beating a dead horse. So, all right. Anybody else?
Let's move on to, um, discussion and any necessary action regarding proposed changes to the per, employee personnel handbook. Cynthia, that is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Mayor, council members, this, you've had the packet. This is really a cleanup item on, um, I think it was a typo, but it's really an overlap. This is in our personnel, uh, policy. And it has to do with PTO, uh, personal time off accrual schedule for the employees. Um, and what happened is you got it for you, but it's basically, you know, under, um, less than and equal to two years is one category. The middle category is greater than two years. Um, and then currently it's less than or equal to six years. And then the next category up is greater than five years. So I think it's a simple typo that we would change that middle one to greater than two years and, um, less than or equal to five years. That would make sense. So it's really just cleaning something up. It's not substantially changing any accrual on part-time, okay, on PTO.
Okay. You two guys, I have no idea who was first, but we'll go with Sam this time.
Josh was first and I was assuming he was going to make a motion to accept it. And I was just holding two fingers up to be the second.
Well, let's go back to Josh then.
Go ahead, Josh.
Correct. Since this ministerial, I've motioned that we approve this change.
And Sam is seconding. Any more discussion from anyone? Well, Shannon is now, if you're still with us, please do your thing.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember McCabe?
Aye.
Councilmember Ty?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Priest?
Aye.
Councilmember Eason?
Aye.
Councilmember Majors?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Cynthia will take care of correcting what probably is the typo. Now we are ready to move to executive session. Do y'all want a short five-minute break or you want to go straight to it?
May we have a break, please?
Okay. We're going to go away to executive session. It is 8:10 and we will reduce, report back at 8:20. Does that sound agreeable to everyone?
Mayor, if you would, would you go ahead and, and read out the four different sections that we're going into executive session under? We're required to at least notify the public.
Okay.
Or I can do it for you. I've got it right here.
Either way, I've got it here. Do we need to read the exemption under each one?
No, if you'll just recite the, uh, the section that we're going under, that will be sufficient. And then, and then the description of, for example, at first one, section 551.071 to consultation with attorney, and then you can read the rest.
Okay. Then, sorry, did my work for me. This is for long-term water source. The next session is, uh, 551.072, to deliberation regarding real property, Old Mill and Morris Street. Section 551.074, personnel, city administrator. Section 551.077, deliberations regarding economic development negotiations. QT is the discussion item. So now I'm, I'm sorry.
That's good. Now, now we can go directly to executive session.
Okay. It is now 8:17 PM. We will reconvene at 8:20. I'm sorry, that's a little bit too close. Let's go back to 8:30.
About 8:22.
8:22. That'll work. Hey, anybody have checked to that one? If not, we're going to close the regular session for this time being and we'll resume in executive session. And it is now 8:17 PM.